Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Stand for the singing of Oh Canada.
Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. With flowing hearts, sweet seething hearts, the true north strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
I hate to say it, I think that's worse yet.
Mm-hmm. New record.
I think that one's a new record. That's a new record, I think that's the worst yet.
Record of attendance, Linda? Good. Declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? Approval of agenda, any additions or deletions? Counselor Landry?
Thank you, your worship. You'll be pleased to know I'm gonna have to remove some items from the agenda tonight, unfortunately. The Committee of the Whole Meeting, the Committee of the Whole, the Communities in Bloom Meeting ended up with a fair amount of motions from your advisory committee, so I'm worried that the meeting may go a little long. So with counsel's indulgence, I'd like to strike item A.C., A.D., A.E., A.F., and A.H. and A.I. And I can, we'll have that at a later time.
Yeah. Is it number E?
Sorry.
Oh, must be E.
So it's E?
Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
Striking, we're just gonna have, I'll put it on a later agenda or on Committee of the Whole, your worship. We're striking 8C, 8D, 8E, 8F, and 8H and 8I. And I'll just put them on a later date. None of those are timely, your worship, so we can do that at a later date or Committee of the Whole.
Thank you. Counselor Mooney?
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to put on health board amalgamations, please, and I think the other ones we can deal with the committee chairs.
Okay, so I'm gonna put you at 12A. And you've got something else for when that comes up?
I think, I think we can deal with the rest of them under committee chairs.
Good. Anything else?
Motion to accept the agenda with the additions and deletions.
Moved and seconded, any more discussion?
Questions.
Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Approval of minutes, Town Council, October 9th, 2014.
So moved.
Moved. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Committee of the Whole, October 30th, 2014.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Town Council, October 30th, 2014. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Business arising, first reading taxi bylaw amendments. C.A.O.
Thank you, worship. Council will recall that we've had taxi bylaw amendments before us fairly recently. That set of amendments included both governance amendments as well as some specific regulatory requirements within the bylaw. And counsel's direction was to go back and remove the regulatory changes and simply propose the governance amendments, and so that is what we've done. So you're looking at the original taxi bylaw with the changes in governance that would allow us to form a committee and proceed to review the details within the bylaw through that committee. So what that means is that we formerly had a taxi association which no longer exists, and that association was to have appointed members to our committee. Since they no longer exist, they can't appoint members. Changes in the bylaw allow for individual taxi company representatives as well as individual drivers to be appointed to the committee. So this evening it would be appropriate to approve first reading, and then what would happen is we would advertise for a public hearing for the next council meeting, and we would entertain second reading at that meeting.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Memorandum of Understanding Yarmouth Facade Society, C.A.O.
Thank you, worship. On the direction of counsel, we've established a facade program. We undertook a facade program study and have a program guide now through Echistics. And we had discussed having a society step up to, or form, to take the lead on delivery of the program, because under the Municipal Government Act, the town cannot provide direct grants to businesses. However, with an intermediary such as a not-for-profit society, we can provide a grant to the society to deliver a program. So this is typically the way it is done, and we did approach some citizens, some recommendations came forward from counsel. A group of citizens formed, met a couple of times, agreed to form a society to deliver the program. And so what they've proposed for us here is a memorandum of understanding between us and the society for the delivery of the program. So that is for your consideration, and if you approve it, then we would go ahead and sign it, and that would help to clear the way to initiate the program.
Good.
Make a motion to accept the memorandum of understanding with the Yarmouth Facade Society, worship.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion, Counselor Mackay-Zachary?
Thank you, your worship. Just one quick question. Any people that are sitting on this committee, are they, will they be applying for grants? Do you know? There were the people that are on the society, are they business people that will be applying for grants? And if they are, would that be in a conflict, or where do they stand and where do we stand? Because I know under the MGA, where there's a conflict, if you're a territory gain or loss.
Right.
So, have we looked at that, or?
So I can address that. Just going from memory, and I haven't met with these folks since the first meeting myself, but I don't recall anybody there that would necessarily be in that case, but there is a provision in the memorandum of understanding that the same conditions of the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act would apply to the society. And so anybody that would find themselves in a position of having a pecuniary interest would have to excuse themselves from not only the discussion and the decision, but also trying to influence the decision in any way.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any more questions? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Revised investigation policy. C.A.O.
Thank you, worship. So this comes out of our Occupational Health and Safety Committee, and there were some amendments here which I guess I can describe, because they're not clear in just this copy of the policy that is on the website. What's happened is they've increased the dollar value of the, of what is considered a minor incident from 1,000 to 5,000. And they have, let's see, major incidents are those which result in permanent disability or death of property damage estimated over, it was 5,000, so that's up to 10,000. And the reason these amendments are being recommended by the committee is that the, it is, it is staff who undertake these investigations, and that what they were finding is that perhaps they were, they were overburdening themselves with undue investigation work, so they just increased the thresholds to manage the workload, I guess.
Good. So are we looking for a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Landry?
Just a question for maybe the solicitor or the C.A.O. In accidents like this that happen that may be under that amount, where do we stand? You know, sometimes in accidents, the actual injury doesn't appear in some cases for a month or two or three, especially when you're dealing with something that is a simple fall. Sometimes later on, complications arise. Where does that place us down the road? I'm just a little curious on that. Either Greg or Jeff can answer that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and I guess if it's, if it's an injury or a fall to a town employee, then I believe they all, or most of the town employees have workers, are covered by workers' compensation, so that would, that would deal with the claim, whether it's significant or not, and any involving third parties, if it involves a motor vehicle accident, the town would have, you know, insurance with respect to the injury in the motor vehicle. So it would only be, and this is only reporting too, it doesn't deal with whether or not, you know, the responsibility of the town, it only deals with the report that's made to the town. So it wouldn't impact anything with respect to the liability.
And just to follow up to the C.A.O., all accidents are reported regardless of value. So if it's a very, if it's an accident on, in the workplace of some kind, there is like a form completed, so we do have them on file, and then if they're overturned, I just wanted to make clear that if it's over this value, then we do the investigation. But if it's under the value, the documentation is still there on the accident.
Right. And it isn't, it isn't a case that we, that we don't look at smaller incidents and look at whether or not there's something that we can do. I mean, the point of the Health and Safety Committee is to keep people healthy and safety and also prevent property damage. So if something occurs regardless of the, of the value, we would look, of course, to see if there's some way to prevent it in the future. What this policy is really about is the Health and Safety Committee actually forming an investigation group to go and actually formally look at it. And it is about preventing recurrence and keeping people safe at work.
Good. Okay, any more discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Staff review process, Counselor Landry?
Thank you, your worship, and I know we, counsel prefers to see motions, but these two items that I raised tonight, in fact, most of them are more discussion, because I'm not sure where we can go with this. We have, we are, lately we're advertising for a heritage coordinator, we've had some changings, changes in planning department, we've hired some new staff here and there. Do we have, have we ever done a comprehensive review of our staffing requirements for the town of Yarmouth? Like, this, how is, how have we evolved as staff? Do we hire them as needed, or, you know, do we have imbalance? Have we ever looked at the whole structure of staff within our town hall and all of our many branches to make sure that we do have the right number of people in the right number of places? Because in some departments, I see our C.A.O. is dreadfully overworked sometimes, and then you wonder about, you know, is it justifiable for some assistance there? Do we have enough in finance? Do we have enough in water billing? Do we have enough in these other areas? And I'm wondering if, and I'm throwing it out for discussion or consideration, maybe there's no appetite, maybe we should look down the road at doing a review of what we are, where are we at, where are we going? With the idea of developing a kind of a comprehensive plan, especially in light of some of our senior staff are getting near retirement age to go into the succession planning, which is another part of that whole element. No, you're okay for a while there, C.A.O., we hope, but, but we're looking, you know, so I'm just trying to see, you know, and I know some municipal governments have looked at this, and I know the agencies are out there, so I'm just gonna throw it out to the C.A.O. for his comment, because he's our only employee and he manages the staff.
Go ahead, C.A.O.
Yep. Actually, the last time we've really had any kind of discussion about this, so let me answer your first question first, is not since I've been here have we got a comprehensive step-back look at staff as a whole. What we do is every time there's a vacancy occur, we look at whether or not that position needs to be replaced, and if it does, does it come back in the same configuration? And we've gone through some different configurations of staff over, over the past several years, because we don't just jump and just fill the position as it was. Currently, we have retirement pending within Public Works, and I'm in a process right now with, with the Director of Operations to figure out the right, the right mix of responsibility, so we're doing a little bit of reshaping there. And that's, that's an ongoing process, but to the question of having somebody from outside have a look at it, we did a process, and I don't recall if it was during your tenure, with Gordon McIntosh. Gordon helped us with some priority setting, and one of the things he offered the last time he was here was a capacity review, he called it. But that's, that's essentially was what it was, is looking at the services and so on that you're offering, and determining whether or not you have the capacities within the house to deliver adequately. And so that, that was an offer from him. There are other consultants out there that, that work in the municipal, municipal world, so it is, it is something that is available.
Counselor Mackay-Zachary?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I was, I read that, and I'm glad to see that you brought it up. I wanted to hear the comments that you just gave, Jeff. That's good, I'm glad that you're, you're open to it. And I'm just wondering if it would be, I'm not gonna make any motion or anything, but it's just, would it, would it be much better to have an outside organization come in, like you just said, that has the knowledge and the wherals to go through a, a look at staff and management in itself, and look at it, see where we are, see if we're understaffed, overstaffed, or whatever. I don't think, it's not a scary thing. It only becomes scary if we put different things into it. So that's, that's not my intent to do that. My intent to make sure that, that we're served, and the taxpayer is served to its fullest, and you yourself are, have a real good understanding that the staff that you have, you know how they work, that they work very well, but they might be lacking something that you're not really, not sure of or sure of, and this might bring it out to the open. So I think if anything, it would probably be a real good exercise, but we'll see where this takes us if, if it goes through. So this is just a discussion tonight, so, thank you.
Counselor Mooney?
I can hold off, let Counselor Landry do a follow-up if that's all right.
Go ahead.
Okay, thanks, thanks very much, because that, so is this something, you know, and again, I'm just throwing it out for discussion, is it something that maybe, C.A.O., that you could kind of look at and kind of say, okay, what would be a good process that would be the most informative view? As Counselor Mackay-Zachary just stated, I see this as a very positive thing, that we can do a, I'm looking kind of more visionary, like where are we going in the future? Yarmouth, right now, I'm pleased to, from what I'm seeing is growing a little bit, we're seeing some nice change, we're seeing a little bit of growth in business, things are happening, starting to move in our general direction, we're seeing more people moving in. So down the road, we're, I don't think we're a shrinking violet of a town right now, like some of the others, but I'd like us to be able to say, okay, where are we gonna be at five years from now? And do we have the, will we have the necessary capacity? Will we have the necessary work? And I don't know whether the best way to approach it is like through a motion to a direct staff to, to look at a comprehensive review of staffing requirements within the town by, and come back to us with an idea of what this is gonna cost, and something we may want to look at in the budget discussions for next budget year. Whatever, I'm kind of curious what you think. I'd like to get a copy of the, there was never a hard copy of the McIntosh, he just made an offer, but there never was, there was never, he never did anything. And I'm just trying to think, I've been around the table, Jim, you were around for a bit too. There was nothing, I'm thinking in the eighties now, I'm dating myself again, and I apologize, we're dating both of us, but I don't believe we ever did anything like this. We actually sat down and looked at where we're going on it, and I'm curious if there was any documentation, if we just, we just kind of evolved rather than a systemic study that we're able to say, okay, this is what a town of our size should have and where we should be going. So, so I'm curious what direction you would suggest from the C.A.O., and I know Counselor Mooney and Deputy Mayor have comments as well, so I'll hold on anything until we all feel what we should do.
C.A.O. with answers? Well, and just to take what Counselor Landry was talking about, one step farther, your worship, and I was just wondering about our capacity in relation to the other municipal units too, because we share over 20 services between us and the other two units, Argyle and the Municipality of Yarmouth. And there's an opportunity for us here in town or in the municipality where they're over-served or underserved with some of their staff members, are we exploring those options of exchanging services with our other municipal units where we can cost-share, cost-share people? And I think that's, when you do anything from building inspection to, you know, a whole range of things, with fire inspection, and there's a whole, whole gamut of things that you can think of, that we might have the personnel here in town that could help them out in the municipality, and, or somebody from Argyle that can help us here also. So not only do we share services, but we can share personnel.
So we're, yeah, we do that. Did you want to speak to that? You want it? Yeah. Go ahead. C.A.O. Go ahead.
Thank you. Excuse me. I could do some looking into this in terms of, you know, talking to Gordon McIntosh about sort of what a proposal looks like to do this kind of work, what kind of range we're talking about in terms of pricing, and deal with it, with the budget process. I guess the one thing that I would, that I would ask you to think about is, are you open to more staff? Because if you're not open to more staff, then there's only one way this can go, right? And I believe that the, the, I believe, and I stand to be corrected, but I'll put it on the, on the record, is I believe that we have a very lean staff for the most part, and that the capacity issue will, will reveal some places where we've got to make some decisions about services. If we're gonna continue to offer them, it's either gonna be more resources or, or perhaps different services. And so if you're open to, to that kind of discussion, then I think it's a worthwhile exercise and would be well received. If it's a, if it's a case of looking for places that you can cut, then I think that it wouldn't be as well received throughout the organization. Goes without saying perhaps, but, but nonetheless, not, 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 not something we don't think about. Okay.
And, and just to your point, we, we still have shared services meetings, where we put everything on the table and we try to add more, and, and exactly that at the last meeting, like how can we share personnel as well? So it's all up there. Counselor Landry?
Yeah, thank you, and, and I agree with that, and I think one of the things that spurred this whole discussion was comments that was made by a citizen last week at Committee of the Whole, that communication wasn't happening between senior staff and this individual. And I think part of the problem was his busyness there, you know, you just, you can only handle so much. I mean, I don't want to ask how many hundred emails you get a day, because I know how many I get a day, and I know you get 10 times more than I get. So the reality is, is that, you know, there may be issues there that we need to look at, and I think the biggest concern is from a town. We, there seems to be a perception out there, there was a perception, it's improved, that, you know, we were almost like a no-town, like because there was just, some of our staff was overworked, there was a little bit of negativity there, and that's changed now, and that's changed very positively. But on the other hand, you know, I think it's important for us as the employers to see that, okay, we have deficiencies in some departments, in other departments we may not have deficiencies, but, you know, we may not be able to pull out of our hat all the needs we have, but that's why I brought up in my early discussion, maybe we have to develop a five-year plan, like this is how we're gonna phase in this position, this position, this position, this is where we, like develop a staffing strategic plan. And I think that would give our, our staff a very positive outlook as to what exactly that we are concerned, that we want to make sure that they're all dealt with fairly and justly. But I'm not looking for cuts, I would like to make sure that we're able to answer all the residents' concerns and to be able to serve our citizens as best as we can.
And I share the same concerns too, because I think this exercise can only help our community, and, and what we're doing is looking at everything that we do here as a community, everything we do as a town, from waterworks to public works to recreation, to, to building applications, the whole thing. So if we see an increase, your worship, as you know, over the last several months, there's been an increase in, in housing sales in Yarmouth. So hopefully over the next couple of years, there's gonna be an increase in buildings in Yarmouth, in building homes. So this is, I think this is gonna be a useful tool, not only for this council, but for the next councils coming up, and like you're talking about, we have to look at this as a, as a long-range plan. And you guys at the staff level, and your worship, and I include yourself, worship, in that equation, as you guys need the tools to help us to, to realize what every citizen wants, right? Lower taxes, better streets, you know, better healthcare, cleaner water. So, and we're all striving for the same thing, and I think this can only help in that, reaching that goal.
One more?
Yep. Thank you, worship. And then given that, I'd like to make a motion that the council directs staff to explore and report to council at a future date, prior to the next budget, hopefully. Various options that are available to us to explore developing a strategic staffing plan and review of all departments and agencies within the town of Yarmouth to, to provide us with background in efficiencies, and also to give us a guidance as to a long-term strategic plan.
Deputy?
I'm listening to the discussion, and we do that all the time. I think, I think that Jeff and his staff are evaluating when there's a change, either through sickness, retirement, or someone being let go. And whenever, whenever that happens, there's always lots of discussion that goes on, I know, about how to replace that person, if we should replace that person. I'm not sure that a formalized process that is being suggested is, is, I don't know, I'm uncomfortable, Ken and Phil, with a formalized approach, and I just feel that, that Jeff and his staff are working away, and, and we've, we've made some changes in the past two years. We have a new planning, a reorganized planning department. We have an economic development officer. We are planning for the future. And, and I just, so, at this point, not to disagree, I don't disagree with, with the process, I just, I just don't want it to be such a formalized approach. We all plan, as you know, from a budget, when we sit down with budgets every year, we're, we're planning for infrastructure upgrades or improvements, and we're over the, over, over three- or four-year period of time, and so at this point, I'm still a little bit uncomfortable, boys, with, with the motion.
Just to respond, and I, I can understand in a way your concern. I think what I'm thinking of in this is a very positive process. I mean, I've seen the C.A.O. on a couple of occasions come in here with hat in hand, literally looking for a staff member or a new position to be created, and sometimes there was some relatively heated discussion around the table. When it gets to the budget process, you can only do so much. And this would give staff, the C.A.O., that opportunity, because they would be integral to the process. I mean, the consultant, whoever it is, would come in, they would review everything, and they would do a very thorough, they hopefully would meet with staff, they would look at the various positions, what we're doing, and hopefully they would have the background with other municipal units, say, well, this is what X is doing, this is what Y is doing, maybe you might want to consider that as an alternative. So if we go at it, and the C.A.O. was very careful when he, when he made his comment, you know, be prepared, because, and it is true, be prepared, because we do have a relatively small staff, especially in the town hall center here. And I sometimes am concerned if we're a little bit too tight in that regard, and I, I really think we, for a town of this size and what we're doing for efficiencies, having somebody come in and look from the outside, and sometimes, you know, you can paint your house a color, and you think it's a pretty color, but really it's like the emperor has no clothes, it really is a terrible color, and that person who comes in with a critical eye says, hey, you've got a terrible color. That's what I'm looking at, trying to get somebody to come in and look at this from the outside and say, hmm, you may want to look at, possible this angle.
Counselor Doherty?
Thank you, your worship. For someone new, new at the table, it would be interesting, it would be an interesting procedure for me, for, for me, to, to find out how it works, but more importantly, I'm interested what the C.A.O. has to say about that. What are your, what are your thoughts about that, sir?
Go ahead, C.A.O.
Okay, well, thank you. If, if it's all right with counsel, I mean, if it's the intent of the motion, I guess, just to put it that way, because we are busy, what I would propose to do in response to the motion, if it were to be passed, would be to reach out to someone like Gordon and get some preliminary information for you, rather than get into drafting an RFP and all that, at this point. And, and we could have enough information to deal with for budget time. I guess I'll, I'll expose, I'll expose a little bit of my personal philosophy with regard to this, is that, you know, when I look at, at you know, when I look at, at towns and municipalities around this province that I'm, that I'm familiar with, and I look at tax rates, and I look at services delivered, and I look at staffing complements, I know that we're stingy on the staff. I mean, it doesn't feel that way if you look back 20 years to what the town had for staff and look at what we have today. But you also have to look at what we had for responsibilities and what we have today. And the, um, there has been a significant change. And I'll, my, my philosophy is that if the money that we collect for taxation is, we need, we need to provide services, we need to put some money in there, but my personal higher priority is in your infrastructure. And, and you know that through the way that we budget and we invest in our infrastructure, because that is the stuff that, that needs to be invested in, where it's been neglected for, for many, many years, and we're trying to play catch-up on that. And so if I had the choice personally between, uh, calling on staff to go a little harder, a little deeper to provide service, and perhaps, uh, forego bringing an additional person in and put the money into the infrastructure, I, I think, you know, where, where I go with that, where I land on that one. And, and the director of finance is in the same, is in, in the same mindset. And so, so when we do the budget process, our inclination is, is less towards staff and, and, uh, services, and more towards ensuring that our infrastructure is maintained and replaced as necessary, the best we can for the, for the tax dollars we collect. And so I guess my, my feeling on this is, is I think we're lean. Uh, I don't have any issue with a capacity review. Um, uh, you know, I just, I want you to understand what my approach is, and that, that I would, I would want, if we go down this road, in spite of what the results might be, uh, maybe council's on a different page. But that, in our budgeting process, I haven't heard that. I, what I've heard is, you know, let's, let's put money in infrastructure, let's do projects and get stuff done. And so, so that's what I've been running with. And I, I, I hope that we think about, regardless of the outcomes of, of a capacity review, of what is, where do we want to put our dollar? Because there are only so many dollars.
I didn't hear 20 words you said. The way he does business basically is to choose to put the focus on the infrastructure as opposed to, to the staff in, in the very best way. Is that the long and short of it? If, if there's only so much money to go around, then, then the focus, the focus is on the infrastructure. If I'm speaking out of you need to, go ahead.
I'll try that again, and I'll try and get closer. The, um, yeah, so, so what I was saying is, is that my, my approach to, to how we allocate dollars in the budget process is more, more directed towards putting money into infrastructure than it is into, into people. I will push people to deliver more before I will add additional people or, or neglect the infrastructure. What we do in, in our budgeting process, we, as you know, we fund our amortization. We're the only municipality in Nova Scotia, and maybe the only municipality in Canada, fully funds our amortization out of current tax revenue. And so other municipalities that are charging similar rates of taxation are spending their money on services rather than on infrastructure. And we have, we have done this for a number of years, and I've not had pushback from council on it. But I guess what I'm saying is regardless, if you, if we undertake a capacity review, regardless of what the outcome is, uh, it's either going to mean that we continue along with, with, I guess, stretching in some cases, uh, stretching our resources, um, or we, we take a different approach. And I guess the compromise would be is if you're going to put more money into services, then you're going to put less money in the infrastructure, or you're going to try and raise more money, which, you know, I, I have, I also have a personal, uh, feeling about that, 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 you know, we have to be very mindful of, of reaching out and taking more money out of people's pockets. So we try and make do with a finite pie. That's it.
Oh, go ahead.
No, you're on, you're on. Go ahead, no, go, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. You know, Jim, I hear your concerns, Jim, but, uh, and that's good. But sometimes you've got to look within to be able to move outward. And I think this exercise is one that will make it, to see where we're strong, where we're weak. It's not a witch hunt. It's not the, the fire the C E O, it's not the fire anybody or get rid of anybody. That's not what this exercise is for. It hasn't been done, as my term sitting around council, this is my probably ninth year going on 10 years, and I don't ever recall this happening. I know it happens other places, like, this is not a Kings County one. It's got nothing to do with that. So this is just to see where we're, where we're strong, where we're weak, and where, where we can improve. And that's all that it is. And to see where we can go and move forward, that's, that's all it is. And it's, it's nothing else. So if anybody out there in the audience thinks there's anything else, it's really not. It's just for the betterment of the citizens and to see where we can improve as a council and as a staff that does the town's business. That's it in a nutshell. Thank you.
Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, everyone else. Um, my, my response to all this is, this, this, this came up quickly. I have a lot more questions. I don't want to hold everyone up tonight with them, because is there a possibility, would everyone agree if we tabled this until the committee of the whole? So we can all sit down and talk about this, or I can ask a lot of questions in the interim. Fine, you need a motion to table this? Or to move it to or change it to? Motion to? All right. Please, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay. Motion to table it to committee of the whole.
To the committee of the whole, please. And thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, point of order, I think you, and Greg can correct me on this one, but I'll leave you proper route B B to table it to the next council meeting. Uh, it could be discussed at committee of the whole, but where it was raised in a council meeting, it should properly, to move a, a motion from, raise it a council meeting to a committee meeting, you can't do that.
Yeah, that's, that's right, yeah.
Yep, good. Yep, okay. Thank you. Someone seconded that?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary?
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, water sanitary storm sewer construction projects. Counselor Landau?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, this came up at our committee of the whole, and I've been following with great interest the construction going on on Green Street. We have a project happening down there, uh, where we're putting in, uh, storm sewer and water. I, I guess through my own stupidity and not really wa, watching carefully, I was off the impression we may have been putting in sanitary sewer as well, only to discover that we weren't. Um, around this table a number of years ago, we had the discussion that when we do a, a major project like this, and we do open the street to replace all three, sanitary, storm, and water. And I can't recall for the life of me if that was ever formalized in a motion. I didn't have a chance to go back and go through, you know, five years and minutes and see if it was indeed the case. Um, however, I, I've raised it tonight for discussion because I've had a lot of concerns expressed to me in my walks, especially on that street every morning, and I've been down there every morning. The sanitary sewer is, is an older line, and I have spoken to the workers who have seen parts of it. And they claim it was probably in the 50s, in the 60s. So you're looking at a, about a 50-year, 50, 60-year as, situation. Um, and what we have, we've dug up the street, the project's pretty well done now. Um, we've dug up the whole street, and the way it's been explained to me, two concerns, uh, it would have been probably more cost-effective to, to put, um, the sanitary sewer in at the same time, um, which is something I'd like to see us do in policy. Um, so that's concern number one, and I don't know how the C A O, what his recommendations on that would be. Concern number two, though, is even more of a, a concern. Um, I didn't realize in the tender again, the way the tender was done, and, uh, I, again, I, I'd like to see us maybe, well, myself, I'd like to pay more attention to it. We are basically paving, right now, we dug up 80% of the street. So from Tucker Street to, um, Argyle Street, we've dug up 80% of the street, and we're going to be paving 80% of the street. We have a strip about five feet long that's going to run from Argyle Street to Tucker Street. That is not going to be paved. That old pavement is going to be kept. Now, on top of that, we've got to cut through the old pavement to connect the storm sewers on the other side of the pavement. So we're going to have 80% of the street, brand-new pavement, a strip running down on the east side, like a checkerboard. Every so many feet, we're going to have a hunk of new pavement, then we're going to have old pavement, a hunk of new pavement, as we cut through the old pavement to connect to the storm sewer. I, I'm really concerned, why can't we pave the entire street? And, uh, it's me, it, I look at what we did on Brunswick Street. We had a similar project on Brunswick Street last year, and it was smaller, I admit, but we did the entire street up there. Here, we're going to have 80% new, and then 20% the way it's been explained to me, old. And come spring, when this all heaves and comes up, it's not going to be a pretty sight. So I think the question, and the project is almost over, um, and I don't know whether we can at this late stage do it, but I'm, I'm kind of thinking that it, we really should be looking at this. And I know we're trying to save money. Here I am, spending money to look at an internal review and staff tonight, or suggesting it. But on the other hand, I'm back to the C A O's concern for infrastructure, because I'm wondering if this is, if we really should try to do it more thorough. So I'm raising it tonight. I, I'm, I, I don't know the right process. I wanted to see what council feels about it, because I really think we should be looking at that. I'd like to see the entire street paved. I don't know whether staff have investigated into the cost of doing the whole street. I don't know, was, was it an oversight or what happened? So that was my concern, and I don't know if the C A O can comment, or if he's going to check into it, or whatever.
Okay. Do you want to speak to that?
I think that's a, an issue really best addressed by the engineer, who would be here at the committee of the whole meeting later in the month. And I think that's a perfect time to, to ask the question. But I, I myself did ask the question because it was raised at the last committee of the whole. And, uh, I, I also, um, so let me, let me tell you what my working assumption is and what my experience is with Mr. Ernst over the last 11 years, is that, uh, when we dig up a street, uh, he does assess the, the, um, the infrastructure. And in the past, he has come to me anytime that there were, there were things that they discovered, infrastructure they discovered, that was, uh, below the expected standard, uh, that wasn't included in the, uh, in the original scope of work. He would bring that forward. We would, uh, determine a cost, bring it to council, find the money, and replace the infrastructure, take the opportunity. Uh, in this case, that didn't happen. And so my, my assumption, uh, when I found out the same information as you, was that that was the case, that he, he made the assessment. But I didn't go with just an assumption. I thought it would come up tonight. And so I spoke to Mr. Ernst about that, and, uh, there were two things that he shared with me. One was first of all, that the, the, uh, the information they have with regard to the sanitary sewer is that there is, there is life left in it. It isn't a case that it, you know, we've dealt with situations before where we found crumbling or, or sewer that was, that was too old and should be replaced. He didn't believe that was the case here. Uh, they are providing, uh, I believe in this, in this process, the ability to have access to it for, for video recording and whatnot, which wasn't previously there. So we'll be able to monitor it on an ongoing basis. The other thing is, is that the sanitary sewer is in, it would actually be in a different trench. So the trenches that are being, uh, dug, excavated for, for the storm sewer and for the water would be different trenches. So we're not burying something back in for the, uh, only to, to dig it up maybe in 10 or 15 years or what have you. So, uh, he assured me that, that he gave it ample consideration, and he didn't make the request because he didn't feel it was, it was justified, uh, given all that we have, and, and that we weren't burying something back in only to, to dig it up in a couple of years. As far as the paving goes, I, he did raise that as well, uh, as something that the contractors were, were interested in, in doing. Uh, but again, based on his assessment of the, of the asphalt condition, uh, he didn't feel that it was warranted to, to pave the entire street. But again, if, if you wish to raise that with him, uh, you know, that, he's, he's the one best to speak to on that.
My concern is, is they are about to pave, I assume, very soon. I mean, we're looking at the street now, and I'm, I'm in talking with the, and again, it's a poor person to talk to, was the contractor, of course, he wants the work. Um, the amount involved is not that significant in a construction project of this type. Um, and I, I don't know, I'm just concerned about the condition of that street and that swath that's going to be going right down. We've got this all beautiful pavement, you've got a swath of about five feet. It was explained to me, I was looking at it today, and then we're going to be cutting across it because there's storm sewers in that trench you referred to. So we're going to be cutting across that at various points for connection, I've been advised, uh, is what they suggested. So you're going to have a, almost like a checkerboard in that old pavement. At least that's, was what was told me today, that they have to, they'll be going across the pavement. So you're going to have a relatively bumpy ride in the spring. And I'm just wondering if there's any way we could look at, find out how much is it going to be, how much is involved to do the whole bloody street, and if it is something that we could do. Uh, now, time is of the essence, because it's a situation where, uh, you know, whether the weather's getting colder, et cetera. So I mean, even if we had to have a very short special council meeting to address it, because I'm just looking for the benefit of the residents on Green Street, it's, it's, if, if it's going to be what I've been told it's going to be, it's not going to be pretty there in the spring.
Did you ask the engineer?
No, I did not. I didn't have, didn't see the engineer. He was in meetings today. I was in town hall on Monday, uh, your worship, trying to see individuals, and I was here on Tuesday, I'm sorry, on Wednesday and today, and everybody was in meeting. So that's why I'm bringing it up here.
Good. So what's the next step? Okay. Oh, somebody's on.
If it is in order, then I'd like just to make a motion that staff be directed to investigate the costs and the feasibility of paving the entire, um, construction project from Green Street, from Argyle, uh, to Tucker Street, and to report back to, uh, a council at some date, just to give us a price. Maybe if there's any way they could hold back on paving until we have at least an opportunity to see if it's a doable thing.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Go ahead. Sorry, can't see your light. Didn't see it. Speak close.
I, I would double-check this, but I believe the number is somewhere in the area of 30,000.
Thirty or 300,000.
Yeah, uh, thirty, sorry. The, the sanitary sewer, which Mr. Ernst referenced, uh, he did, he did look at the cost and what that would be, and that was in the area of 300,000. Uh, I believe, and I'm only going from memory, and, uh, I, I'll reserve a right to be wrong. But I, uh, but I believe the number, uh, when Minster Ernst raised that with me, was in the area of 30,000.
Counselor Mackay?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, Jeff, do we have the 30,000 if, uh, council decides to do that?
Go ahead.
I don't know. Um, the honest answer is I don't know. I don't have, uh, an update, and I haven't asked for one very recently in terms of our capital budget.
That's, that's, that's fair, but you'll, in, in the information that you provide us, you'll give us that information. Thank you very much.
Any more discussion?
Yes.
Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion? Nay. Okay, one nay. French Legion of Honor Award, Counselor Mooney.
Your worship, thank you, your worship. I'd like to make a motion that the town of Yarmouth send congratulations to Wesley Spinney and Al Sid LeBlanc in receiving the French Legion of Honor Medal.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Go ahead. World Singles Candlepin.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to send a note of congratulations that the town of Yarmouth send congratulations to Cody Burke in winning the World Singles Candlepin Championships held this past week in Boston.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Reports. Committee of the whole, deputy mayor. Go ahead.
Um, motions, uh, from the committee of whole, October the 30th, number one, that the town of Yarmouth set aside fees for building permits for the facade program up to $100 per applicant. I move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that Tracy Bruce, planning and G I S technician, be appointed the ability to administer the civic addressing bylaw.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that permission be granted for one sandwich board sign to be placed in the public right-of-way adjacent to the Yarmouth walking trail.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Counselor, your light's on.
Yes, thank you, your worship. Uh, I'm in favor of this. We all are. We've all sat down. We've spoken with the gentlemen. Uh, but this is with the understanding, I hope, that this is not just a one-time special permission granted to one special business, and that this is being looked into. granted to one special business, and that this is being looked into, because there are others looked into to accommodate other businesses in town, other retailers, whose businesses are suffering simply because of the bylaws, the signage bylaws. They can't put up a sign on the, on the building that they're renting, that they're renting space in, and they also cannot put sandwich boards out. So, those restrictions, not only did this particular, this particular business feel the restriction, but others are as well. So, we are looking into that to accommodate other businesses as well, because they are suffering, their businesses are.
CAO?
This is, this is a specific approval for one business in this situation. It is an exemption that council has, has the right to grant. Every business has an opportunity, the same rights within, well, within a zone, the same rights for putting up signage. But that being said, the signage bylaws within the land use bylaw are being reviewed, and will be coming forward to the PAC for a significant revision.
Thank you. I just wanted the public to hear that.
Yes.
So that they can, they can, they can sleep rest again for another night. Thank you.
Okay, motion on the floor. Any more discussion?
Question.
Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that the Remembrance Day policy statement be approved.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Question.
Questions been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that staff confirm the presence of the tree on Kemp Street and refer the matter to the Yarmouth Recreation.
Still there? Is it still there? Was it there this morning?
Okay. Did that get seconded?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Well, well, once it comes to council, it's gonna get done.
Thank you, your worship. Jeff, if you can recall, there was a tree that fell, Arthur knocked down a tree, down by the Kemp Street parking, ballpark. And it was, it was over, the guy didn't think it was, it wasn't on, it wasn't on his land, it's on our land, and you were gonna get ahold of Frank Grant, and Frank was gonna take care of it, whatever our public works. Okay, thank you.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Question.
Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Deputy?
I move that staff be directed to have Water Street plowed, either by existing staff or through an RFP process.
Moved and seconded, very firmly.
Question.
That, go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, your worship. Just a correction in the wording, I think, if you, if Jim read it right, I didn't really read it here. It's plow Water Street, it's not so much a Water Street, it's a sidewalks. We already plow Water Street. Yeah, but, but it's, it's the sidewalks. And that was Counselor, Counselor Landell's motion.
Okay, so we'll say that staff be directed to have Water Street sidewalks plowed? Is that all right? Solicitor?
Just gonna add that, okay? Friendly amendment? There's no such thing as a friendly amendment. Bernie would have my hide. Okay? Sidewalks. Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that staff be directed to approach necessary agencies involved with affordable housing to invite them to Yarmouth for a presentation to council and developers in the area who may be interested in taking part in their activities.
Moved and seconded. Just, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I read an article in the Vanguard, I don't know how many of you around the table read the article, that I think the Nova Scotia government is looking for proposals for low, low rental housing or affordable housing. It's in this week's Vanguard. And if I read it right, they're looking for landlords, ex-in landlords, or, or building, construction builders to contact them. They have up to, I think maybe the, this Friday, tomorrow is, is the last day, if I read it right. So, the Counselor Mooney, I think, brought this motion a couple of weeks ago at the Committee of the Hole. And hopefully, I would like to think that the words got out, but we had asked about this before at this council send letters off. So, hopefully, it's paying off, so we'll see what takes place and what happens. But we should really follow up with this, so. Anyway, I just wanted to let you know about the letter.
Good, thank you. Moved and seconded. Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that, as recommended by CAO, an additional sixty thousand dollars be allocated to the heat recovery project for the Mariners Center, with additional, with the additional funds being transferred from a reserve for Mariners Center.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question.
Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that staff be directed to organize a meeting to discuss the Christmas promotion.
Done.
Done.
Okay. You have a question?
I made the motion, someone seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that staff be directed to look into the reinstatement of a fire policy advisory committee and report back to council at the next town council meeting.
I, I have a question. Do I just, I spoke with the chief today, just late this afternoon, and if you wanna speak to this, you can, but this is taken care of. You have a committee set up, everything's been kinda reorganized. And do you wanna, you wanna explain that? Because we don't need to do this, if that's the case. I, I think this one may be on chief. He'll, he'll, he'll come turn this on. Yeah.
Yeah, when we amended the, when we amended the bylaw, what we did was, we actually changed the structure of the committee itself. So, the committee never did leave. It's just built differently, I guess, put together differently. So, we have a number of chief officers that are on it right now. And what that does is, it allows me to be more flexible, so when I need them, I can get them to get her faster for the advice that I would need in using them. And at the same time, we now have representation for, for the volunteers still on it. So, we don't have to worry about the volunteers' voice not being heard. So, the committee still is there, and I can still use them for when I need them.
So, so if a counselor wanted to sit on, because I know Counselor Mackay-Zach brought this up, if he wanted to sit on that, or another counselor, there's room, provision for that?
If, if we reopen the bylaw and change it again, we could add counselor to it. But if anybody wants to talk with, to that committee, or sit with that committee during a meeting, they can be invited or asked to be invited, and we'll invite them. But if we change the composition of it now, we'll have to reopen the bylaw and change it all over again and go through all the steps.
You like it the way it is?
Right now, I like it the way it is. More advantageous to the fire department itself.
Good, thank you. Counselor Mackay-Zach, go ahead.
Well, that's, that's fair, but, and that's great, but there's nothing that can't be opened, that can't be redone. That's my thought on it. And we as counselors, you know, it was a committee that we did set on, and it was a committee that worked well for a lot of years. Perhaps the last few years, when, when we set on it, there wasn't enough meetings at that time. But I think it would be beneficial on your behalf, and also on your volunteers' and your staff's behalf, to have three counselors, like they were on there before, to speak, speak to, to council, our, our rest of the colleagues around the table, and be more, more apt to look at different issues in, in a different light, where you, where you set on the committee. So, I think you ought to give us some thought. I won't ask for your, your opinion now, I just heard you, but I'm not gonna give up on having counselors sit on it. So, whatever it takes to have this work, I'm gonna go for it to make it work. I don't, I'm disagreeing with you, to agree with you, but I think it needs to have counselors on there. That's the way I seen it. It worked before, there was nothing wrong with it before. The problem wasn't the ex-chief or the committee members, it was us as committee members not holding enough meetings. That was the problem. And that, that, that won't happen again, because it's a different, it's a different realm now. And so, I think it would work to your, your benefit, and the rest of your volunteers, and your, and your full-time staff benefit, and council's benefit.
Counselor Dodd?
Thank you, your worship. Regardless, chief, any one of us who want to inform ourselves are welcome to at any time, sit in on any of your committee meetings. Is that correct?
Not any committee, but that committee, yes.
That committee, I'm sorry, yes, yes.
Call me up, and, and I'll invite you, and I'll get the committee together. It's actually easier to get together too now. So, all I gotta do is call everybody, we all get together, and if anybody wanted to be there, speak on anything, talk about anything.
Oh, all right.
I just needed there, I just needed to get a group together that was, that could get together faster, and I could use them more, I guess I'd say, more than once a month, more than once every two months. They need to be together right away, right? Because we have some projects coming up, I'm still following my priorities, I'm not changing my priorities. But we have some projects coming up next year that I'm gonna have to get that team together, right? And, and it's gonna be on a, on a regular basis to get, get things going, and looking for their advice, so.
All right. But the point that I was, wanted to make is, this particular, that particular committee that, that's in question right now, is just like any other committee, that any, anyone here on council could sit.
Yes, oh, yes.
And join.
Yes, come to the, come to the meeting, give me a shout, I can let you know when we're gonna meet. Or if you wanna call it together, I can call the committee together for you, and we can sit down if there's an issue that council has.
Thank you.
So, your worship, and Jeff, and John, so the motion that I've just put to the floor, it's appropriate, then we defeat the motion?
Well, it's, it's, it's a vote.
It's a vote?
It's just a vote. So, seven people, seven, yeah. Go ahead, Counselor Mooney.
And I can see Counselor Mackay-Zach's concerns with this, because fire department's one of our biggest budgeted items. And I think probably we should have a member sitting around the table. It doesn't have to be three, but maybe, I think, one might be advantageous, not only to the fire department, but to ourselves, because there has to be a communication going back and forth. And what's a fire department budget, CAO? Just round about? Around two million dollars? Maybe we should have somebody sitting at the table, because like the chief said, there's gonna be a lot of things going on over the next couple of years and his priorities, with updating of equipment and all the other things. It might be good to have a voice, not only going to the fire hall, but the fire hall coming back this way.
Thank you. So, so from my perspective, it's working well, and we don't, what the policy is saying, what the motion is saying is that the reinstatement of the fire policy advisory committee, you already have that running.
That committee's still there, yes.
So, so we, we prob, I mean, I, I'm not going to support this motion, only because it's, it's already in place, but we could make another motion to, do we need to make a motion to have somebody on that committee? Or just call you?
It might be sent to the fire department.
Right? Do it at the Committee of the Hole, or, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. Given the discussion, it probably would be appropriate, as Deputy Mayor suggested, to defeat this motion, as it now stands. But on the other hand, Counselor Mackay-Zach's point is extremely well-taken. And I'm agreeing with him that, I mean, any bylaw can be opened and revised if we want, if council had the wherewithal or the stomach to do it. I think the valid, it's a valid point, and Counselor Mooney raised a great point. We're looking at a two million dollar budget. I have a Communities in Bloom committee with three counselors sitting on it, with a budget of fifteen thousand dollars. We've got a two million dollar agency that we have no council representation on. Kinda looks like a little bit of an imbalance to me, there may be a point there, I don't know. So, I mean, if Counselor Mackay-Zach feels interested, or he definitely is interested to explore this idea, then I think a new motion would be crafted. He should craft a motion at a future meeting, and we bring it up, and to add a council member or two to the committee. And if that's, if that's the intent, that's the intent.
So, so that's what I just said. This, this motion is not correct, because it doesn't have to be reinstated, it's already there.
Yes, we just have to change the composition.
Okay. All right, good. And then, at another meeting, you wanna do that at the Committee of the Hole?
Okay.
Okay, it'll be a different, different motion. Okay.
Question?
Did you wanna?
Yeah, and just the other thing, your worship, and I see Counselor Cunningham here from the municipality, and John said on that a couple of years ago. John, I'm, I'm correct, on the fire policy. Now, those guys are, I think they pay thirty percent of last year's actual cost of the fire department, so we might have to reach out to another municipal partner and see if there's an appetite for those guys to come on board too, because they're spending thirty percent of two million dollars. It's a lot of money there too, your worship.
Good, okay, so the motion's on the floor. All those in favor? Against?
Nay.
Nay. Okay, motion defeated. Go ahead, deputy.
I move that the physical activity strategy be approved.
Thank you, thank you, chief.
Thank you, John.
Very much. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Question?
Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that, as recommended by the town engineer, annually in the spring of the year, the town of Yarmouth will provide a cup service for brush and small tree limbs to the residential section of our town.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question?
Questions been called.
Question?
You know, give it, I, I, yeah, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that staff be directed to work with Mariners Center to prepare an accountability report of projects over the last five years, with revenue and expenses, and the amount of return on investment.
Now, I have a question, for the CAO, probably. The Mariners Center, we have partners in the Mariners Center. So, are we good to do this by ourselves, given that it'll take staff time at the Mariners Center? Go ahead.
I think we, we should, we should request that they work with us to develop that. I think the partners would also be interested. Certainly, the municipality of Yarmouth, I would expect, would be, as they've been fifty-fifty partners on all of our investments there. would expect would be, as they've been 50/50 partners on all of our investments there. Argyle is a new partner, but I, I would expect they would be interested as well, but I, I would look at it as, as staff be directed to work with Mariner Centers, really to request that they, that they work with us to do this and it might be so, yeah, that's, that's just, not just asking them to, to work with us to do it.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to try, I don't wanna do it without the partners and not, no, okay. Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Citizen Advisory, thank you, deputy. Heritage Advisory, Counselor Langel.
Thank you, your worship, and again, if any of these motions, they're, they're late and I apologize, but to get that committee together and with UNSM and all this, we were only able to meet this week, so we only got together on it and with the holiday, it was hard to get everything together. Your worship, the first item, council referred to the Heritage Advisory Committee a concern written by a resident to rename Hawthorne Street Maude Lewis Street, or Lane, or Avenue, or whatever. The committee met on it and we discussed it and it was felt that it would not be appropriate to rename Hawthorne Street in honor of Maude Lewis, and there were several reasons for it. There still is a question as to exactly her whole involvement with Yarmouth. And secondly, Hawthorne Street is more of an industrial street, it, it was not in keeping, the committee felt, with her as an individual, but as an alternative, the committee is recommending to council, and I'd like to make this motion, that the multi-use trail between Parade Street and Stars Road be named Maude Lewis Trail. And if there's a second, or I will explain what our plans are. This was brought up at the committee meeting and in fact, it was Counselor Mooney who suggested it and then it, it merged, and in fact, we also discussed it at Communities in Bloom yesterday. We're kind of envisaging a very neat project there. There is a graffiti-filled rock face on that trail and the suggestion is, is to work with the schools and to work with Burridge, to actually turn that into a Maude Lewis collection, like we would actually create a Maude Lewis scenario in there, so people would walk in, so to cover that graffiti and, as was pointed out yesterday, some of it's not so bad, but some of it is bad, and the thought is, is to really clean it up and actually start looking at, kinda developing it as an attraction in some case, there's a very small park next to Subway, a small hunk of land next to Subway, maybe talk to Subway if they would be interested in partnering with us, to work as a group and make that a, a really neat experiential trail that people could actually see and we could celebrate Maude Lewis, so that was the recommendation. Communities in Bloom is very much in favor of it as well and they discussed it at the committee meeting yesterday and they wanna work with the Heritage Advisory Committee to, to bring this into fruition. It's not a overnight project, it's gonna take probably a year or two even to get it to the point we want, but, but it's a, an alternative concept, so that was our recommendation on that.
Sounds like fun.
Yeah, and, and just to echo Counselor Langel, it's, I think it's a great idea and it could be a good attraction, we had staff at the Communities in Bloom meeting, we had Rodney Doucette there and he said there's some actual walking trails in behind the rock facade, so in behind, I think it's, it's not, Burton Avenue in behind there and off Charles Crosby Drive in behind there, so it's, I think it could be developed into something really, really unique and we're looking to honor Maude Lewis, who's from Yarmouth County, from South Ohio, or from Yarmouth, all depends who you talk to, and I've walked there several times and I think it could develop into something really, really, really good and like Counselor Langel said, we know this is not an overnight project, this is gonna take a few years to develop, but I think with everybody onboard, with our students and, and developing an idea for this trail, I think it would be an asset for Yarmouth and for another reason, for people to stay here for an extra day just to explore that area and, and to develop it further, so I'm fully in support of this and the community, or the Communities in Bloom Committee and the Heritage Committee were both equally excited and they were all supportive.
I love it, I think it brings everything to life, it's, it'll be used even more. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor, seconded?
To what?
For, for the Maude Lewis Trail, that the multi-use trail between Parade Street and Stars Road be named Maude Lewis Trail. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I am thinking impartially on this, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking back to where the original request came from and the reason why that request was made, and I'm also asking, I don't know, am I asking Heritage Advisory Committee or am I asking, am I asking the Communities in Bloom? Has this?
Can I, can I just, we, we sent it from here to the Heritage, so I think it's the Heritage.
So it's Heritage, all right, thank you. Has this already been sent to the original requesters?
All right.
All right, 'cause I think if I had originally requested it, I would like to, I'd like to get a little input, I'd like to get a little information before someone, someone goes and makes decisions without letting me know, that's all. Without, without at least asking for my input, that's all. So you go ahead.
Good point. Go ahead, Counselor Mackay.
Thank you, your worship, this is a little off track here, but it's got to do with the trail. Here a few weeks ago, I had a call, the old famous call, where I was asked, but this was a call, and it was to let me know that there was a, a car that was on the trail, driving on the trail, so I asked it, the CAO, is there any signage up on both ends that'll let people know that it's not for vehicles on the pavement part of the trail? And if not, will there be?
All right, can you hang on to that one? Soon as we finish this, go ahead, Counselor Mooney.
Yeah, and thank you, your worship. It, it was discussed quite thoroughly at Heritage Advisory and not so much at Communities in Bloom, because it was passed to the Heritage Advisory Committee, and we felt that the Heritage Advisory not taking anything out of Counselor Langel's mouth, that who, who is the chair, is, so I don't think there's an appetite to start renaming streets in the town of Yarmouth. Now, Jody Shelley was the absolute, I think, an exception to the, to the rule, but we can name the trail, the sidewalk and the trail itself, Maude Lewis Trail, but we can still keep Clements as the street, so, so you're not only, you're not changing the name of the street, you're, you're, you're naming a trail, so you're honoring Maude Lewis without changing the integrity of the town. Now, there's some discrepancies on what, what Hawthorne Street was named for, because somebody thought it was an old sea captain that brought back some Hawthorne trees from, from England, we don't know what it is, there's several theories about that, but maybe we should send correspondents back to those, to the individuals that sent that in, because, but we're gonna do that with the trail with the concept of, hopefully they're gonna be involved, we want this to be a community effort and if, I think if they go out there and look at that facade, look at those rocks, what can be developed there is gonna be second to none in this province and we won't be changing a name of a street, we'll be adding a name of a trail, so it'll still be Clements, but Maude Lewis Trail will be Maude Lewis Trail.
Good, thank you.
And I think, and thanks very much, Phil, because he's had on the money there. The other concern, there were two other concerns that we did look at. Number one, serving our, our residents, to change the name of a street is, is not an easy thing. You have to consider, there are businesses on that street, they would have to get all new stationery, they would have to get all new advertising, they'd have to, a whole new identity, plus you're getting into mapping, you're getting into GPS, you're getting into, we went through that already, CAO was doing some digging on that, remember, we brought that up before, so it's, when you, when you change the name of a street, it's complicated. Jody Shelley Drive was convenient, because we had Cottage Street and Cottage Lane and there was some confusion between the two, and that's one of the big reasons why we, we, we did that, because it was very convenient to, to clear that up and there was only really two or, one business was, one business was inconvenienced and they were onboard, there was no real issue there, from what I recall, and then you had a few residences, so, so logistically, it was good. The second concern that the committee looked at was the suitability of the individual. Just to remind council that the original plan was that through a grant process, we were gonna do a development in that street for Maude Lewis, there was, the Waterfront Development Corporation was looking at a project there, the money wasn't there, so the project hasn't been developed, so it may be down the road, it may happen, there's nothing wrong with that, so the big reason why we adopted this one was because the trail is gonna attract children and Maude Lewis and her paintings are very reflective of that, children were key ingredients and this is one of the intents for doing what we did, so I would hope council would support that.
Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship, all I wanted to say to Counselor Mooney was thank you, that's exactly what I was hoping, hoping for. See, that didn't take long.
Anybody else wanna talk? We're good? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Go ahead.
Next item, your worship, the committee has been working on a heritage incentive program, the program has been more or less finalized, however, I'm not gonna ask council to even consider it tonight, I am simply giving a notice of motion that the Heritage Advisory Committee is recommending to council that the heritage incentive program be approved as submitted and I'll be raising that at the next council meeting to give council time to look at the program and if they have any questions, they can speak to Counselor Mooney or myself on it.
Is it done?
The, the, the program is done, it's ready to go, but council has to approve it, so therefore, we want council, give 30 days for council, look at it and they have any questions or concerns, they can get at it, because it's not fair to you councilors tonight to look at a, a program, et cetera, and the trick is, it would be referred to budget.
Good, okay. Keep your light on.
I don't understand.
Go ahead, that's, Counselor Dawes, yeah, just a notice of motion, okay? Counselor Langel, new directory signs?
Yeah, Heritage Committee is very concerned about the, the state of the signs going into the Heritage District. These signs are quite old, they're in relatively hard shape, and considering that we've won at least one national award for our heritage conservation, it's kind of a poor reflection of what's going on. So the committee is recommending several things, but the motion is gonna be that we, my motion is to refer to budget, that the directory signs in the Collins Heritage Conservation District be replaced in 2015 with the addition of three new signs, one at the corner of Clements and Alma Streets, one at the corner, one at the Willow Street entrance to the district and one on the Central School property, and this is merely a recommendation to budget, for budget consideration.
Moved and seconded? Go ahead, counselor.
Thank you, worship, how much they gonna be? How much are we referring to budget, please?
I did speak with one supplier today to give us a ballpark figure, but we won't be in the budget process till January, so we'll have figures by then, to be honest, I don't know, we need to redesign them, I would say you're probably looking at in a, probably under 10,000 for sure, to put them all, all five of them, because we are looking at mounting them and putting them in posts, et cetera, the posts are, are gone in some cases, in fact, one committee member raised at the committee that we wish that we could take them down right away, because some of them look pretty haggard, but, you know, so if we're gonna be serious about our conservation district, we, we should be celebrating it, you know, as much as we can.
Good, Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship, would you also please add, add one more sign to that? And that is, I believe it's, I, I think it is a heritage, I know it's a historical property, it's, it's a historical site, the original Vengeance House, what's the name, what's the name, Counselor Mooney? Rashawn's Tavern? That sign has been in my backyard for almost three years, because it had, it's, it's just, it just fell off, it's, it's post out of, out of pure neglect. It, it's just been neglected for years and it was wobbling back and forth, back and forth on its, on its last little screw and nail, so we saved it and it's in our backyard since then, so would you, would you add, add one more sign to that list, please?
Go ahead.
The Reichen's Tavern, of course, the Vengeance House, which is one of my great stories of telling the story of Reichen's Tavern, which I wouldn't bore you with tonight, that is not the original building, the original Reichen's Tavern burned many, many years ago and that structure that's there now is, is a building that was built later. The sign that you're referring to was done by the Yarmouth County Historical Society and they used to have a very active sign program years ago, which they no longer do. The sign is on private property and therefore, we do not get involved with private property, so as a result, that's one of the reasons why it's, it's not been replaced by us, it was actually done by the museum, they had a number of signs like that around the county and they, they stopped doing them, it was quite a, a good initiative. Yeah, it was very nice and it's a great story.
Plus, the other thing, your worship, with this, these are for the Heritage District itself, so, this is for the Heritage District, so maybe we can make a motion, if you wanna look at investigating and put in a sign down by the old Reichen's Tavern, then, then go for it, but this is for the Heritage District itself.
Okay. All right, so this is, oh, sorry.
One last, one last question, please, is there a possibility that the historic, your heritage?
Heritage Advisory.
Thank you, that the Heritage Advisory Committee would consider looking at and establishing a second heritage conservation district in town? There is one part of town where the town started.
Yeah. We, we did originally, I, I was on the original Heritage Committee that created the Collins District and we actually were looking at two districts in the day, but there was quite a, a community, what's the word, revolt is a good one? Yeah, the second district was not very popular, so.
With whom, please?
Pardon?
With whom, please?
Well, the residents, because you gotta bear in mind, the Heritage, to create a Heritage District, there has to be complete agreement from all of the property owners and you're putting tremendous restrictions on your property.
Yes.
It's, it's, it's a huge, huge restriction and if you have one or two property owners who do not want, it becomes an issue.
My question was only, would your committee consider it?
Oh, if you, we definitely would love it. If you wanted to just give us some geography, we'd look at it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good, okay, now, we have a motion on the floor, which is to refer to budget, okay?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, is there any more discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Go ahead, counselor.
Second motion, your worship, we, we met with Counselor Mooney and myself and the Heritage Coordinator, met with a consultant from Halifax to look at Frost Park, he did table us a, a report that we will circulate to council, I'm simply making a motion to refer to budget again, a project for the Frost Park Grave Marker Documentation Project, just simply be a refer to budget and if it's seconded, I'll explain what we're trying to do there. The, the Heritage Committee, Frost Park is one of our major parks, well, is the major park in town, it's the centerpiece, and the concern we're having is the monuments and we're also concerned as to where the bodies are, that is a huge concern, because it is a cemetery, I mean, the reality is, folks, it's a cemetery, it always has been a cemetery. So our biggest concern is the safety end of the monument markers and to actually do a, a complete recording of the monument markers, and secondly, the benefit of this is that the documentation would then go to our GPS technician who'll be able to overlay it with the proper mark, the whole satellite image and the different imagery of the park to actually start us with a comprehensive plan. The project would run around $5,000, it's a budget consideration, we're not approving it tonight, it's simply to move it to budget, if the dollars are there, we go with it, if the dollars aren't there, we don't go with it, so it's a mere referral to budget.
There must be some money out there somewhere for some, that's a good project.
The irony is, the town has never applied for provincial status for that park. I sit on the, I'm the chair of the Provincial Advisory Board and a lot of people are getting onboard and you'll be seeing a recommendation from Heritage Committee coming to have the town apply for the province, to have that park recognized as a provincial, as a provincial heritage site. Once we do that, your worship, then we can open up the dollars.
Get that done, okay? Moved and seconded, any more discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Go ahead, one more?
One more on this, on this round, the second round's coming, now I know I pulled my other items off. We had an application for a substantial alteration to Murray Manor, there is new owners in Murray Manor and they apply to the Heritage Committee for permission to do a substantial alteration. The committee spent a fair amount of time reviewing the recommendation from the coordinator and Counselor Mooney may wanna comment on it. Basically, what the intent of the new owners is, it's amazing what they plan to do with the building, the good news is, is it's gonna be completely cleaned up on the outside with a really nice facade, they are planning to remove the old short, kind of the add-on barn or garage that's there and put a proper two-door garage that's gonna be completely even with the roof line. The committee was very enthusiastic about the, all the alterations, they're gonna do, it's gonna be an absolutely magnificent attraction. However, there was a concern about the decking, the plan was to put a two-story deck on the back of the building and there was concern about the design, so the recommendation from the committee was to approve the substantial alterations, with the exception of the deck, until such time that their architect can get the deck designed to fit within the context of the building, because the committee felt it was taking away from the building and the way it was being done, so we are working with the property owner to do that, so rather than slow them down, the recommendation of the committee was to ask council to approve the alteration, which you can do, because it's a municipal registered building, with the exception of the decking, at which time we would, we will work with the property owner hopefully in the next month or two and get that resolved, and Counselor Mooney may wanna add onto that, so.
No, you don't, not, don't echo, just if you got something different to say? Sorry, thank you. Okay? Moved and seconded?
Questions?
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Okay, Communities in Bloom, now, that was, there's a separate sheet in case anybody, okay, we have those, counselor, she copied them. Do you wanna pay, are you good, you wanna copy? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, and I apologize again, we just met yesterday with council, with the committees, Communities in Bloom, again, we had a delayed meeting because of UNSM and holidays and whatever. Number of recommendations are coming from Communities in Bloom, there are four. First of all, I'd like to move that the new, that new four-stream waste receptacles be added to the seven at locations identified and to change the single waste bins in the downtown area to four-stream waste receptacles over time, and this would be a referring to budget as well.
Okay, can I have a seconders?
And just to speak on that, we actually, committee members actually went out and mapped the location of every garbage and waste receptacle in the town of Yarmouth that we emptied, and we discovered there were some discrepancies and there were some areas that really have been neglected, so we've identified seven areas and more notably, at the end of the trails, mainly in the trail areas, the new, for example, Maude Lewis Trail that we just recognized tonight, there's some issues there as well, so Rodney Doucette was with us and we're, we're, so referral to budget is all we're looking at to see if we can't go to the four-stream rather than the single bin. And I will comment, your worship, there is a concern with the four-stream, we are having vandalism and it is very unfortunate with this, and I don't know, Counselor Mooney, do you wanna speak on that with the vandalism issue that we had?
Not to echo what you're gonna say.
That's right.
But I, I was gonna, that's a question I was gonna ask you, because that was a concern that Mr. Doucette had Rodney from our Parks Department, we lost four receptacles and I think Martha, was the ballpark prices for those over $1,000 apiece?
Two thousand.
Two thousand, so we lost four in a week, right? Four, $8,000 just obliterated and that's coming back out of our Communities in Bloom budget, out of our Parks budget, you know. you know? That's money that we can spend on other things, but four in a week? Like one was put up one day on the end of the trail and it was pounded right to smithereens. You couldn't even identify one piece out of the thing from what Rodney said. So, you know, you say, somebody asked me, how come you haven't got one on there? Well, we had one on there and it was there for one night and that was it. So that's a concern that, you know, I know, your worship, you say it all the time about vandalism. He's had some at the Yarmouth South Park, some of the things that happened down there. And I know with the video down there with the skateboard park, we need our citizens to step up and if they see anything happen, then call the RCMP and let them know what's going on because this cycle has to stop. And, you know, when it costs $8,000 for something that you're trying to help the environment with, it's, it makes it hard for Rodney, you know? You're after Rodney for not, you know, getting these things in place. But when they do have the finances, the resources, the equipment to put up and then it's smashed, it's not a good feeling.
Is that we had a, you know, for example, in the Yarmouth Skate Park, we had two of those bins there. They did not survive the night for the photo op the next morning. Like they, when we did the photo op and the official opening, they weren't there. They were gone. They were totally obliterated. And what we recommended, Communities in Bloom recommended is, when we lose one of those four-stream containers, just put in a barrel. You know, there's not much, it's not pretty, but, you know, we still have to have waste receptacles of some kind for our residents. But as councillor Mooney said, we really wish people would report damage to either town or the RCMP and we just, this senseless vandalism. And I can't imagine what pleasure you would get out of beating up a garbage can. I mean, it's, I just can't fathom that, anyway. Anyway, I call for the question or the motion.
Any more discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Go ahead.
This has come up around the table before and this is an awkward one. The motion from Communities in Bloom, and you're going to laugh when we did it, we really wrestled with this one. The motion is that we're recommending that staff investigate the possibility of installing cigarette butt receptacles in the downtown area. And I'll explain that if there's a seconder. Okay. Councillor, councillor? Poor councillor Dawes, this was, no, I didn't want, it came up at a committee from a committee member. Blame David Sallos on this one. We're at a real conundrum on this because one of our committee members brought up the amount of cigarette butts in the downtown is phenomenal in some spaces. The other issue is, is that our little machine that goes and cleans the sidewalks and sucks up these things can't pick up cigarette butts. And I thought it was one of, I've kind of laughed here in a previous council when councillor Mackay said he followed one. And I thought, wow, that was strange. Well, even stranger, I followed one in Halifax. They get a machine in Halifax and I was out for my walks and I must see if these things can actually take up the cigarette butts. And they can't. They just cannot take them up. So the concern is, is we'd like to, we know that it's illegal, and this is where we get into an issue here, and this is why we're asking staff looking into it. We know it's illegal for people to smoke within so many meters of a building. But on the other hand, is it our responsibility to provide butt receptacles of some kind for them? But on the other hand, people are simply flicking these darn things. So the motion is simply to ask staff to investigate it, tell if it's feasible or not, come back to us, and that would be a budget item. So that was the recommendation.
I'm still trying to get past the fact that there are two councillors who follow butt. Really need, yeah, research, you need to get a life, okay? Oh, my goodness. Go ahead, councillor Mackay.
That's what you do at four o'clock in the morning when you've got nothing else better to do and you can't sleep, so you follow these around. And there was more to it than that, if you can recall.
Yes.
Yeah, there was. It's just too painstaking to go through it again. The thought of the receptacles, here you just gave a rendition of how they beat up garbage cans and receptacles and all the other good things. So now they have more stuff, probably to do some more kung fu kicking and all the other stuff to beat these butts, butt stabbing things off people's buildings and that. I don't think it's a real good move myself. I honestly don't. I didn't think so before and I don't think so now. But nevertheless, if staff has time to waste on this, then let them do it. That's my opinion about it, anyway.
Deputy?
Your worship, I'm going to vote against the motion. I sweep the sidewalk at least twice a week, three times a week, and I pick up all the cigarette butts on Main Street in front of the store, John Street and Alma Square.
I think with people standing outside in broad daylight, smoking, we need to fix that. Okay, all right. Can I call for the question? Thank you. Question's been called, all those in favor? Contrary? Nay. Nays. Okay, motion defeated. Go ahead.
Good up until now, so you've got to lose one once in a while. We did that at UNSM, we won five and lost once. Five to six, that's pretty good. Okay, the next item, your worship, this is also, well, this is something hopefully we can approve tonight because they need to know in advance. We need to know because of a time factor. That the town of Yarmouth support the Second Annual Garden Symposium on February 27th and 28th, 2015 and sponsor the event in the amount of $1,500. And I'll explain if there's a seconder. This was very successful last year, your worship. We held it at the high school and we had over 70 local gardeners attend. It was an excellent session. We're kind of optimistic that it could almost become sustainable this year, but we're not sure. We'd like to have it here at Town Hall. We actually looked at the physical plant at the high school and we realized we could do it here. We have a meeting room downstairs, we have two meeting rooms here, and that's really all we need. And we can serve a luncheon out in the hallway, out in the corridor, like a buffet style. So it could be a little cheaper than what we did last year. We also have some different corporate groups that are more interested. The $1,500 would help us with the cost of bringing in speakers. We like to bring in some real good garden speakers that would work with these individuals.
No, about $1,500?
No, no, there's a number of them. It's expenses. They don't charge for the speak there, they just come in for the, they just, expenses to bring them in. We have one guy, Mr. Phil, the guy we bring in, the soil guy, Mr. Singh, for example, comes in, he's excellent, excellent speaker. And the people who attend this are the gardeners. These are the people in this community who really put the oomph in our town. So it's a beautiful event, so I'm kind of hoping council will agree to that.
Okay, did we have a seconder? Moved and seconded, any more discussion? Question's been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Who do we write the check to? It's us. We're going to put it on, the town. Okay? Yes?
Worship, thank you. Is this not part of actually Communities in Bloom budget? Would you not budget this every year if you think that, if you know that this is coming up? You are putting it in your budget? So are you also putting in number four in your budget, which you are asking money for in June? Okay. Did we vote?
Okay, go ahead.
And the last one, your worship, that one on the page is just for Heritage Advisory to agree to work with them on the Maud Lewis Trail. Your worship, the final motion from Communities in Bloom is that the town of Yarmouth sponsor an opening reception for the Nova Scotia Association of Garden Clubs on June 5th, 2015, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM here at Town Hall. And if it's seconded, I'll explain. Your worship, we have approximately 300 gardeners from around the province coming to our community in June. Vivian Kennedy and her garden club have done a commendable, commendable job putting this together. And they requested through Communities in Bloom if the town would consider hosting an opening reception. This would not be a large thing, just you'd be looking at some fruit and cookies or something like that. It would not be an expensive event. We're not looking at wine and cheese or anything fancy like that, just a meet and greet, an opportunity to meet the mayor, hopefully some of the councillors, et cetera, et cetera. A few opening words, town crier, town crier, that sort of thing. We're looking at 300 to 350 delegates coming in from around the province, so it would be a really nice thing. And they're drawing their schedule up, so that's why they need to know as soon as possible to let people know if it's a doable thing.
Call for the question? Question's been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? One nay? Motion carried? Okay, one more? Reports for information? That one's, skipping that. Number 10, Correspondents for Action. Coal Shed Music Festival Resupport. CAO? Oh, councillor, sorry about that. I just saw his light go on, so.
Your worship, the request here is with regard to the possible restructuring of the music festival. And I did a little looking into what the additional cost of, if there would be additional cost for the sound system. I was advised by the provider that it would be approximately an additional $1,000 if they were to restructure the festival. So if that factors into your decision at all, that's one bit of information. The other is, I did check with our Marina staff to find out if the proposed dates, if there were any conflicting events that were sort of on the books. And they assured me that the dates that they were proposing here would not cause any conflicts.
Councillor Landry?
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to make a motion that we support option two, that is proposed by the Coal Shed Festival Committee.
That one comes with the extra, that's the one with the extra $1,000, okay? Moved and seconded? Go ahead, councillor Dawes.
Oops, no, thank you very much, I.
I had put my light on to make that same motion.
Oh, sorry. It's all right.
Go ahead. All right, moved and seconded? Any more discussion? Question's been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Agricultural Society requests for presentation. Councillor Mackay, did I miss you on that?
Yes, what'd you say?
I didn't miss you on the previous one, did I?
No, no, you certainly did, no.
Okay, go ahead.
Jeff, I had called you some time ago on a concern. Is it proper to run that concern up here or?
Is it about the Agricultural Society?
Yes, it is. The letters here, they're asking for funding. It's a public document now. So they're looking for emergency assistance, I guess, to pay the rent, half of the rent or the rent for the exhibition that they had? They haven't paid it as of, they haven't paid it as of yet? As the norm, if somebody's in the arrears, like paying their taxes, paying their water bills, paying anything, the question that I asked you, will the same conditions apply to the unpaid rents, rental of the Mariner Center to this organization, I guess? Yes.
Go ahead, CAO.
So I checked with the manager as a result of your question, and normally Mariner Center doesn't carry receivables. Their nature of their business is that things are paid in a timely manner. And this is unusual for the Exhibition Association as well. And so they don't have a policy on the books to charge interest as of the date that I checked. And I don't believe the board has met since.
Okay, so the Mariner Center is a part, the town of Yarmouth is part owner of that building, so would our, the way we handle and do business, would that apply to that portion of the 50%? I know the, I don't know what the municipality, how they do theirs for, I haven't got a clue.
It would be governed by their own policy.
Their own policy, yes. So I guess the question can't really be answered till you really.
No, but I can bring, as your representative who meets with the board, I can bring that concern to the next board meeting. Two issues, I guess, is carrying receivables. And secondly, is.
I think it's very important that we do because, you know, because it is, it's a facility that doesn't run on making money. People have to pay to, you know, to go to the facility, I guess that's what I'm saying. And if they're not capable of paying, then there is a problem, not only for this organization, but for anybody else. There has to be some sort of a deterrent. So thank you.
Yeah, and the request, I'm just wondering if they should also be approaching the municipality of Agala, is that before they came into the arrangement at the Mariner Center?
That was before.
That was before, okay.
Councillor Dawes?
Thank you very much, your worship. We all have a lot of questions. Why don't we just allow the representatives, people from the Agricultural Society to come and answer our questions?
Well, this is what they're requesting a presentation. Right, so. So is that what you're suggesting, councillor? That we say yes to this?
Yes, absolutely. Otherwise, we're going to, otherwise we're going to be asking one another the same questions over and over again that we cannot answer.
So do you want to make a motion?
I will make that motion, yes, please.
So the motion is to have the Agricultural Society.
Make a presentation.
Make a presentation, okay? Can I have a seconder? Seconded. Discussion, councillor Mackay.
That's at the committee of the whole, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
And will it be like any other grant application, will there be an audited financial statement being requested? Do we treat it the same as we do grants in January? Is that a good question?
Can I make a suggestion that we just wait until they make their presentation? We don't know exactly.
Yes, we do. We want $8,000 and something dollars. We know exactly what they want because it's right there.
I don't have that.
I don't either.
Is it on that letter?
You are obviously privy to other information that we are not. I don't have the website in front of me, I just have the letter in front of me.
Okay, so we just, yeah, some of us just have the letter. No, here's the thing, that they're going to present, which we want them to present, but when they present, if we can, Linda, if we can make sure that we ask for, unless we already have it, whatever information we want them to bring us, then we should request that. So they come prepared, that's fair. You know, I don't want you to come and ask questions that you can't answer, which I'm sure you can. I know you can, I know you can, but just so we have financials in front of us and that type of thing, okay? Is that fair? Okay? Councillor Dawes? CAO?
Oh, sorry.
Question's been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Application for Yarmouth Recreation Committee. Okay, so we have, you certainly can, go ahead, CAO.
Just to bring your attention, we've had a number of requests for presentations that have been approved by council and we do have in upcoming agendas, a number of presentations scheduled. And I guess the question is, council's direction in the past has been to limit presentations to one per meeting. And do you wish to make an exception to that rule or do you wish us to carry on and continue to schedule one presentation per meeting?
Committee of the whole, we usually have one presentation. So he's asking if we would like to continue with what we've been doing with one meeting per committee of the whole, or do we want to up the ante? Go ahead, councillor.
This one's important enough, not only to us and our partners, but also to the Agricultural Society. I think we might have to waive that rule for one meeting and invite them in.
Can we just do a show of hands, are we okay with that? Anybody that's, okay? Good. Okay, so.
Next committee of the whole?
Is that all right? Yeah, I just, I didn't know if you needed anything else. Good? Okay. Application for Yarmouth Recreation Committee. So we have two. So what's the next steps here? What's that? Oh, one's for recreation, one's for mariners, so there you go. Okay? Yep, one application for, we're going to do the Yarmouth Recreation first. Kevin Northup. We have one application for Kevin Northup to, for the Yarmouth Recreation Committee. It's been moved and seconded. Anybody, any discussion? Question's been called, all those in favor? Aye.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin. Oh, Kevin's right there. You're in. Okay? Okay, and application for citizen rep on Mariner Center Board. We have one. Councillor McIsaac?
Thank you, your worship. My question will be to the CAO. Jeff, looking over the application really quickly, do you have any concerns about this applicant? That's right there.
It's Derek that worked for the World, he worked with Hockey Canada.
Yeah.
And they brought the World to Yarmouth.
Yeah, yeah. Great, thank you.
I do. He's excellent. Okay, so I need a motion to accept him, okay? Moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Energy Efficiency Program Presentation Request. If we want to do it. Sorry. Go ahead, CAO.
This presentation would not be for a decision of council, but rather for information, and so what they're asking is for the opportunity to sit before you and inform you on their programs. There is no pending decision that they're asking you to make.
So it was just for information purposes? Did I make that motion?
Okay, so this is the attachments here, that they sent the information. Yeah. The question is, do we want the presentation, or are we satisfied? So what was your, or are we...
I say let them come, they can have the presentation.
Okay. So your motion is to have a presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Now have a seconder? Moved and seconded. You look like you were gonna say something else. Moved and seconded. Okay? Any more discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor? Contrary? Nay. Okay. Motion defeated. Yeah, that's okay. Royal Canadian Legion Branch 61 re-dealt with. So Shore Mustangs Hockey Club, support. They're looking for, there's the different, I have prices on one page. Okay? Go ahead.
So this request is really for council to purchase and add, or provide a sponsorship, I guess, for, and it's on behalf of a person who is playing on that team, I believe Hurlbert is the name, Hunter Hurlbert, Yarmouth Area Fellow, and so I guess the, it's kind of a grant request, but in return for your grant, you do get recognition either in a program or on a sweater.
Okay. Go ahead, councillor.
Thank you, your worship. Like all other grants, it's, this is a latecomer. We usually have a process that we follow in January, February, so if anybody's looking for grant monies, or whatever it might be, this is not the time. We don't normally grant any funding because of the grant process that we have, and if we stray from that, then we open up Pandora's Box, and then inflows all kinds of other requests. So if you're gonna request to give it to one, then you have to give it pretty much to, you have to find some real good excuses not to give it to anybody else, so. I say we thank, thank the person, but not at this time, and explain the reason why.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, next, Tri-County. Oh, is there, oh, I can't, sorry, didn't see your light, deputy, go ahead.
I wasn't quick enough. With respect to Danny, I would suggest that a $70 business card in support of this, of Hunter Hurlbert.
Okay, is that your motion? Okay, moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor? Contrary? Nay. Okay, all those in favor? One, two, three, nay. Whoops. There we go. Well, you know. No, he was gonna pass a hat, 10 bucks each. Okay? Listen, we go against policy every... Every day. We're gonna be fixing that. Okay. Tri-County Women's Center Re-Event Support. So... Okay? Anybody else wish to speak to this? Okay. Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Southwest Health Outdoor Smoke-Free Zones Bylaw. Okay? Go ahead.
I think that's something that's... Huh?
No, I already hold. I already hold.
I think that's something that stemmed from a comment that I might have made to council here, maybe in our first month or two, when we were talking about our butt receptacles. And I was talking about other communities across the globe, that some of them have smoke-free environments, or smoke-free main streets, or smoke-free in front of businesses, and I think it's a conversation that we have to have with Southwest Health. I think, I know it's a touchy subject, I was, I had to change my walk a couple times, councillor, from going down Main Street because of some of the comments I made, but I think maybe if we can get, if we get Raymond in, maybe to give us a talk after the first of the year, after what he can see, or what he can envision with this, and it might be a good exercise just to see, maybe we're not enforcing the bylaws that we have, because there's, what is it, 20 feet in front of, 12 feet in front of doors, 20 feet in front of, you know, I'm not quite sure what it is, but somebody said...
Whatever it is, it puts them in the middle of the road.
Yeah, but somebody said, actually, I think almost on any point on Main Street, if they enforce the staying away from the doors, that actually there might not be any smoking on Main Street at all, right? Unless you said you stood in the middle of the street and did it. So maybe I'll make a motion that in January, invite Mr. Raymond Gedet to give us a talk on a smoke-free environment.
Moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
Talk or presentation.
Yeah. Deputy, you look like you're gonna... Oh, sorry, I can't see your light. That's probably... Go ahead, CAO.
Okay, the, what exists right now in law is actually provincial law around the, I think it's three or four meters from any doorway, and I understand from asking a couple years ago, that there's one person in the province who is responsible for enforcement. Okay? So he's spread a little thin. When it comes to actual bylaw, and of course you can invite Raymond in to educate us, I guess, in terms of what the initiative is that he would propose, but a bylaw such as this, in terms of enforcing it, is a bit tricky, because you have to walk up to a person and get their information to fill out a ticket. And if you tell somebody, hi, what's your name, and you're wearing your bylaw enforcement outfit, and you pull out your ticket book, and you start asking for information, you're not likely to get it. So that's one of the issues that we kind of have around the bylaws. It's a good idea, it's a great idea to have smoke-free places, but is it, how can you effectively enforce it, is the question.
Deputy Mayor?
That was just more or less some of my comments that Jeff has just made. Whatever it is, it's gonna be difficult to do, and smoking is a very difficult and challenging habit to break. So I have no difficulty hearing from Raymond, but I wondered, Phil, if we're asking for presentations, if it can be just sometime when it's, you know, January, February, March sort of thing.
Good. Councillor Doss, councillor Landrell?
Just a bit of a history lesson, too. Love bringing up the past. If I had a dollar for every hour, that our bylaw officer stood up at the high school when this issue came up, when we were approached by the high school a few years ago, this is the old high school, with the student smoking on the sidewalk, you remember that, Phil? We couldn't enforce a thing. I mean, it could, we couldn't do, the kids were smoking right there, and the poor Russell would go up and ask their name, and they'd tell them to, mm, and he wasn't very successful. I mean, and then, of course, we went through this cat and most game with administration to, do you know who this kid is? And identify the kid, and I mean, you've got seven or eight hundred kids, and by the time the other kids are coming, it was, it really is an impossible law to enforce. It really, I mean, it's a great idea, it's a great presentation, but man, you talk about a capacity study needed, one guy for a thousand miles.
Councillor Doss?
Thank you, your worship. I am not going to use the word echo.
Thank you.
I'm not, however. I am going to share what my first thoughts were when I read this. I thought, yeah, yeah, go for it. Give it a try. It's gonna be just as easy to enforce loitering, excessive car speakers going by, souped-up mufflers going up and down. It's exactly the same thing.
Can I not say the word echo?
Don't you worry. If you say the word echo, I'll call you on it. No rants and no echoes. We're getting, we're getting under control here. Okay, so the motion's on the floor, and it's been seconded to invite Mr. Gedet to come in and speak to us. He said in January. That's what, January, next winter? Okay? Linda, can you change that to winter? Okay? Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Nay. Motion carried? Okay? Previously distributed. Questions for committee chairs? Councillor Mooney, do you have a couple?
I'd like to...
Yeah.
Your worship, I'd like to congratulate your worship on being elected to UNSM Executive, and I'd just like to give, yeah, give her a hand. Give her a hand. She beat a very capable opponent in Dave Walker, but I'd like to give you, your worship, to give an overview on the UNSM, the executive, and what you see their role is in the next couple of years, being on that.
Oh, wow. I think it's, no, it's an excellent question. It's an excellent question, and the first thing I have to do is wrap my head completely around UNSM, but there's a lot of stuff on the plate, and especially for the towns with regard to the fiscal review and everything that's going on there, so there'll be a lot of attention paid to that. I think one of the biggest things is the gas tax, that we need to take a really close look at that, and I know that some of our CAOs colleagues are looking into the gas tax and different formulas and things like that. So I'm looking at big-ticket items. That's why I wanted to get in and make sure that we're represented on this end of the province, so the big-ticket issues, fiscal review, gas tax, things like that. Yeah, and I might say, since you brought it up, maybe even just a brief report every month, because there's a monthly meeting, just to keep everything. I think councillor Landrell used to do that for the Town Caucus, and just to make sure everybody's updated on what's going on. Yep. Okay, go ahead.
Question to councillor Landrell's. And we had quite a discussion of this at Communities in Bloom the other day, just like to give you an overview, or you can give us an overview, on some of the damage that happened in Frost Park because of Arthur and some other things in the Christmas lights.
Thank you very much, councillor Mooney, yeah, and I'm glad you brought that up. We, as probably the CAO may want to comment as well, Frost Park took a lot more damage in the lights than what we had originally anticipated as a result of Hurricane Arthur. As the public knows, the park was pretty well decimated by the hurricane, we lost some trees, et cetera. However, work has been done in the park regarding the lights, and as the electricians and staff have been going, they realized that the, quickly realized that the existing lights, those that did survive, were pretty badly gnarled, and there were some huge issues with them. Over the past week, they've been working on it. As luck would have it, last year, the crane that we were using in the park was out of service for about three weeks because waiting for parts, which meant that some of the lights that we purchased last year were not put up last year. And the good news is, is we still have those lights, so as a result, we're looking at no additional expenditure, so what we are now doing is restructuring all the lights in Frost Park, trying to put them back. Currently, as we're speaking tonight, there are three trees lit. It is the goal of the electrical company, Mike Ryan, who's been doing a lot of this work as a volunteer, and our staff, to have the park probably back to fully lit by around the second week of December. But to let the public know, there's no way we're gonna be doing that big glamour show when we do the tree lighting upcoming. The tree will be lit, but we're still at a point of cleaning out the debris and the disrepair, and trying to get everything back online, so we won't be doing that opening, that wow show that we do every year, unfortunately. However, we are very optimistic that next year, in 2015, your worship, we will have our wow show back, providing we don't have Hurricane Arthurina hit us, that hopefully we don't have that happen. But that's where we're at with it. It's unfortunate, because we spent three years, but it's kind of, there's a silver lining here. The first year we did this was an experiment, the CAO can, may want to comment, I don't know. We never did this sort of thing before, so what happened was the lights that we were using were not maybe of the standard we should have used, and we had a lot of issues year one. Then year two, Rodney Doucette and Mike Ryan came up with a more rigid set, and we've been really, you know, testing, and we now think we have the ultimate solution kind of a thing, and the new lights that are up now are much more durable, will be long-lasting, and also much brighter than what we had before. So I think the community will be very pleased by the middle of December, your worship, when they see the end product, but unfortunately for the tree lighting, we just will not, we're just gonna be lighting the trees as we get them lit. So as they're put on, as we get them lit, they're gonna be left on, and the public can enjoy them.
Good, thank you.
And just one final question, your worship, the CAO. After the Utility Review Board ruling on Milton Park, when can we be meeting with the residents and the citizens and the Milton Improvement Society on the redevelopment of the Doug Malonsen Park? And if you can explain the, I think that's public knowledge now, that the ruling has been out? And can you explain a little bit about what happened and the process, and what the ruling, what the final answer was?
Go ahead, CAO.
Well, in a nutshell, the town made a decision to sell, to accept an offer to purchase some of the properties that were for sale, where the former Milton School was, and one of the, one of the components of the offer was that there'd be an additional six feet of property transferred. So the town accepted that offer, and in doing so, subdivided the property and rezoned it. And the appeal to the Utility Review Board was really, what they were able to rule on was, did we do that process legally and properly? That is the subdivision and rezoning. The group that filed the application had other concerns, and they dealt with, you know, whether council was honorable, or lived up to what they understood an agreement to be, and so on. But those are not areas that the Utility Review Board has jurisdiction. The Utility Review Board was clear on that, and the ruling was, is that council did no wrong, that what we did was done properly and well within our authority, and so the rezoning stands, and, yeah, so that was the outcome. The property was sold, so it wasn't a case of whether or not, you know, the property belonged to the town or not. The property had already been sold, it was a matter of would it be zoned open space, or would it be zoned R1? And so it was upheld. It was, so, nothing, no wrongdoing on the town's part.
So the second part of the question was the Doug Malonsen redevelopment?
Yeah, so there is a motion on the books with regard to the design of the park and engaging the communities, I'm sorry, I may have been misspeaking there. I believe it was Milton Improvement Society be involved in that design, and that is in the hands of our Parks guy, Parks Coordinator, along with many other things, but perhaps this winter is a good opportunity, when the Parks work slows down, to engage in that process. And I have to say, I'm not sure if they, to what degree they have engaged this to this point. I don't have my hands directly on that, so they may have already had some discussions, I don't know.
Good. I just wanna, this isn't a question. Councillor Mooney and I are going to the Athletic Banquet tomorrow night. Counselor Mooney and I are going to the athletic banquet tomorrow night. And we understand that the C.A.O.'s daughter is the youth athlete of the year. You must be very proud.
All the talent from her mother.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And I'm heading to tie-ins at the end of the month, and they were talking about the Communities in Bloom Award. So that's really good work, really exciting. Okay, we good? Any more questions for chairs? Counselor Dawes, you're on.
Thank you, your worship. I have a question for Counselor Langel with regards to... I know you can answer this. I know. I know you're not chair of the Parks and the Trees here in Frost Park. But the lighting of the trees, residents have been asking when the tree lighting is going... The lights in the park, when they're going to be lit. And they generally are lit at the same time as the Christmas tree is lit. And now I've heard that, yes, we are very... We're all aware of the damage that some of the lights in the trees have taken. So the initial lighting is still going to be on the same evening of the Christmas tree lighting, which is November twenty...
First.
First.
Next Friday night.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, yes. All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, we do the lighting normally. We work in conjunction with BURB as well in that. I mean, there's a whole event thing. Unfortunately, we won't be doing the wow. You know, as I said, we won't be lighting the whole park. There will be lights on in the park, and we might be able to orchestrate something, we're not sure. But we just didn't want the public to be disappointed to come, and there may only be four or five trees lit, whereas last year, the whole park was illuminated. We wanted to be upfront and say, "Hey, guys, it's not going to be that wow show." So we just want to give people a heads up on that. So chances are, we'll just leave the trees on, you know, on our cycle basis. Yes, they're on now, Jim, yeah. And we'll be adding trees over the next week. As we get the trees rewired and reinstalled, they'll be lit up during the week.
And regardless of a wow factor, a big thank you to Mr. Ryan and the Parks Committee because they're just putting heart and soul into that. They always do, and it's a good thing. Any more? Go ahead, C.A.O.
Sorry, I just wanted to comment on the trees. Because there is one element of this that has been missed, and I was just made aware of it this morning, is that besides the damage that we sustained through the storm and normal wear and tear on the lights, unfortunately, there was also some intentional vandalism, that some wires were actually cut. And it's obvious that they were. And that's kind of unfortunate. And I only raise that because I think we just need to understand that, you know, if you see something like that happening in the community, if you see somebody doing something that is damaging public property, then if you can let us know, then that helps us to deal with it. And a great case in point is with our skate park. In the last couple of weeks, we had some assistance from people in the community to identify some people that did some vandalism, and that helped us to be able to deal with it. It was a successful outcome. So unfortunately, some more vandalism, but we won't let that deter us.
And I think just further to the C.A.O., Robert Peel, who was the one that started the first police force, had the great axiom, "The people are the police, the police are the people." And I think if we're going to take control of our community, then we should be policing our community as well. We can't expect our CMP officers to be everywhere at the same time. And, yeah, I know people sometimes don't like calling and reporting, but I got to commend the mayor and the others who spread that face... The webcam pictures, it was very quick. The individuals were apprehended, thanks to citizens who identified them. And that's wonderful, and I think we need to be more proactive if we're going to have control of our community.
Good. Any more questions for committee chairs? Additions. So Counselor Mooney, you're the only one with an addition, and that's a good one. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. This is something I've talked about several times over the last couple of months. As we all know, in the summer of 2014, the Department of Health and Wellness made the announcement that the boundaries at the four zones within the new single provincial super health board, the head office of the new super board will be in Halifax. The four zone offices will be in the western zone will be in Kentville, the eastern zone will be in Sydney, the northern zone will be in Truro, and the central zone will be in Halifax. Plus, the CEO, the executive team also, will be in Halifax. Three out of the four zones, plus the head executive office, are located either in or within one hour of Halifax. One of the guiding principles to create one of the super board is the efficiencies that can be found and duplication eliminated by using technology, communication by video links and teleconference makes proximity to other stakeholders irrelevant when choosing a location for a zone office. Another guiding principle has been repeated by Health Minister Leo Glavine over and over, that people should have the same access to services no matter where they live in Nova Scotia. Under this new structure, Yarmouth has gone from being administrative center for the healthcare in southwestern Nova Scotia to being an outpost of a Halifax-centered super board. Local decision-making is being removed from Yarmouth, and this has already started to happen, especially with the human resource department. They promised this new super health board would be responsive and accountable to the unique healthcare issues and concerns of rural Nova Scotia. How can this happen when they move decision-makers, their support staff, and their offices closer to Halifax? Whereas, under the new amalgamated health system, Yarmouth has gone from being the administrative hub for the decision-making in southwestern Nova Scotia to being an outpost of a Halifax-centered super board. Whereas, the super health board zone offices have been announced, but they have not yet been set up or have been staffed. Whereas, Yarmouth has the space, the resources, the talent, the technology to serve as an effective location for the Western Health Zone head office in a geographically fair manner that will ensure the concerns of rural Nova Scotia will be fully considered in the new super board. Therefore, I make a motion that town council immediately arrange a meeting with our local cabinet minister, Zach Churchill, and Health Minister Leo Glavine to allow them to explain why Yarmouth was overlooked and to give us an opportunity to present the benefits of making Yarmouth the location of a zone office within the new super board.
Second.
And just to say this, your worship, layoff notices have already been sent on the fifth floor of the hospital for the first of April. And another thing that's come to my attention is, we have the chair of the hospital foundation here, Mr. Barrow. And I know Counselor Kozak, one of his great joys is the Jody Shelley Golf Tournament, which raises money for equipment and needs at our local community hospital. We also have the parking fees, which you're very fond of, which we had a great discussion on at the UNSM. The parking fees go for purchasing equipment for this hospital. Under this new program, or under this new super boards, they could take equipment that people paid for through the Yarmouth Hospital Hall of Blue, through the Jody Shelley Golf Tournament, through people paying four dollars to go through the door of that hospital. They can take that equipment, deem it surplus, and ship it to other places in Nova Scotia. That's equipment that people in Yarmouth and southwestern Nova Scotia have paid. We have Auxiliaries in Clare, we have Auxiliaries downshore that raise money for our southwest region. And when they can take our equipment that we paid for with our hard-earned money here in western Nova Scotia through the economic times that we've been through the last several years, and move it to another part of the province, that is not right. So, your worship, these boards haven't been set up yet. They're going to be set up. They're going to be set up by next April with modern technology. There's no reason that Yarmouth shouldn't be one of these prime key locations. There's no reason to have three of those health boards within one hour of Halifax. That defeats the whole right... Iveney report. You know, we want to help people. We've doubled our money in doctor recruitment over the last several years. We've put money into the residency program. We have the Dalhousie School of Nursing here. We're trying to attract professionals, but when they take that decision-making process and ship it somewheres else, we should be contacting the minister, not only Minister Churchill, but Minister Glavine, and saying, you know, "It might be a good idea to amalgamate these boards, but let's keep Yarmouth in the mix, and let's keep Yarmouth on the front lines of healthcare, because we know how to do it, and we do a good job at it."
Counselor Langel?
Thank you, your worship. Great motion as well. The only thing I would concern is in the motion. My biggest concern, of course, is the equipment. And I heard the minister speak twice now, that if that equipment is deemed more desirable, I think, put some of the words in other areas, or there would be more use of the equipment in other areas, they will be pulling it from the smaller facilities. And I really think that we should have in your motion, Counselor Mooney, that we're seeking assurances that equipment would not be removed from the Yarmouth Regional Hospital, that we would not be losing equipment. I think we need, at this meeting, that, to me, is critical because we're talking millions of dollars have been raised over the years for equipment from this community. Because if that equipment starts walking out the door, that health, that whole foundation might as well just pack up and leave because nobody's going to be donating money to buy another piece of equipment for Halifax. So I really would like to see you incorporate in your motion, maybe the wording, and seek assurances that equipment housed at the Yarmouth Regional Hospital shall remain in Yarmouth for the use of residents in southwestern Nova Scotia. I'd like to make that as an amendment, or if you would agree to add that. As your seconder, I would agree as well, because I think that would be very wise.
Who seconded that? So you're good. We all did. We all... I think we... Yeah, okay. So we're good with the change. It's just... Go ahead.
The meeting, I understand, will be with council, correct? That was the intent? That we will have an opportunity to be in on that meeting?
What's that? Yeah, it says town council. Town council immediately arrange a meeting, yeah. Counselor Kozak?
Thank you, your worship. Just a quick question. Timeline on this.
Well, I was just going to ask you yesterday.
Yeah, because this is very important. Things are moving along pretty quick. So the sooner the better, so if we can get it done ASAP, it'd be great. Thank you.
We'll have that arranged by tomorrow at noon, Linda.
We're up by then.
Yeah, we'll be out. We're almost done.
Yeah.
Okay, so motion's on the floor, seconded. Any more discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Additions. Approval of invoices. Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Date of next meeting, December the 11th. In camera, one item? I think I have one, too. Okay, good. A motion to go in camera, please. Yes. Cameras? Oh, sorry.